Planning zoning commission for the city of Granbury will now come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, February the 13th, 2023, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. The first order of business tonight is approval of the regular minute, regular meeting minutes from January night, 2023. Do I have any corrections or additions, deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, please.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve the minutes as presented by Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr., sorry, Richard Hayes. Mr. Hayes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No offense there. I just went totally blank. The next item on the agenda is item D1, public hearing, consider request of Vicky Nivens for a special use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhosted in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 520 East Bridge Street. Kira?
Thank you. So we'll start off with the location map. The site is shown outlined in blue or teal, and the site is almost a half an acre in size. They're at .45. The zoning, in addition to the R 8.4, it's also zoned historic preservation ordinance. Historic preservation is not required for review with this application because they aren't making any site changes. This site has operated as a unhosted bed and breakfast, or short-term rental, rather, and in the past was granted a SUP for one year for a short-term facility with two bedrooms. The purpose of this request is to have a SUP of good standing, not that the last one was in bad standing, it's just that it was expired, and to continue the short-term rental unhosted use with two bedrooms. So the surrounding area is comprised of single-family residential. Primarily, the single-family residential is to the north and along Bridge Street. There, to the south, also are single-family residential and other bed and breakfast types. To the south of this site is a retail store and other commercial development along Pearl. This is the zoning map that shows the site zoning. As we know, bed and breakfast and short-term rentals are allowed within SUP in residential zoning districts and specifically within the historic preservation overlay and historic conservation overlay. Again, this site is in the historic preservation overlay. We use this context map to help you identify where other existing active short-term rentals are located, and so those are outlined in pink on the map. And the subject site has that hatch with the green and dark color. This is the site plan. The house fronts and is oriented to Bridge Street, and the driveway has two parking spaces. Requirement is for one parking space for bedroom, per each bedroom. This will have two, so they are in compliance with the parking. That area that's darker colored to the upside, to the north, or yeah, the south on this map, that's a pool. It's not a separate dwelling unit. This lot only holds one dwelling unit, and that dwelling, again, has only two bedrooms. This shows the floor plan, and the floor plan and site plan would be required in the conditions as part of the SUP ordinance. This shows the location. Headlight screening is required, and that fence there, as well as the building, serves that purpose to shield headlights from other dwelling areas. The application. We sent letters of public notice to surrounding owners on February 3rd. We sent 21 notices out. We also published in the Hood County News as required by state law and zoning ordinance, and we did not receive anything in response to those mailings and notice. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions: require of a term of one year, the site plan and the floor plan, not more than two bedrooms, and the remainder are pretty much standard phrases of our standard conditions that go with SUPs. One is that the SUP is subject to all of the supplemental standards as contained in the zoning ordinance. The SUP would need to comply with city codes, permits, and periodic inspections and so on, and any violation then would be deemed a violation of the zoning ordinance, and the SUP may be null, void, or the seal may be revoked. These are your voting options, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Is applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak, Mr. Gaffin?
Not unless anybody has any questions.
Any commission members have questions for the applicant's representative? Okay. I'll open the public hearing, and we have one speaker to speak, Mr. Peter Garland.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission. Chair, I would like to talk on D1, D2, and D3. My argument will be the same, so if you'd give me a couple extra, maybe one extra minute.
That's fine. Thank you, sir.
I could cover all three of them, and then instead of rehashing all this stuff. My name is Peter Garland. I live at 511 East Bridge Street, right across the street from that little hatch mark on the map there. From Stockton Street, which begins the 400 block of East Bridge Street, to the end of Bridge Street, in the 600 block, there are nine short-term rentals. Doesn't sound excessive to you, but it certainly is to me. In front of the house we're talking about, there were 10 cars one day, I counted, out there. We either need to slow down the amount of crowds that we're going to have in that area, or have a load limit for how many people can be in the house at one time. The problem I have with the short-term rentals is you have taken nine small houses off of the housing market that people who do not have a tremendous income could have afforded back in the days when these were being developed and rehabbed these houses. Now, she, the applicant tore down three houses to build these, and there are several other houses. The house next to me at 403 would have made a beautiful house for a nice family. There is another house coming up at 401 East Bridge Street, which will probably be on next month's agenda. What I am really concerned about, I know you're not going to deny this woman the permit for these houses, but we need to find some way to slow down the amount of houses we are converting into short-term rentals. I mean, nine houses on East Bridge Street, if you've ever driven down there, you know there are not that many houses, and I would really like to slow it down. Now, I know you have another short-term rental coming up later on tonight, and I would also be against that one, just because now we're taking what happened in my neighborhood over to Rucker Street and making that all bed and breakfast. So where are people who are, cannot afford a half a million dollar house, where are they supposed to find housing in Granbury? These houses are being turned into short-term rentals. I do have an article from the New York Times yesterday I would like to leave with the commission to read it at their leisure, and it says that during the Super Bowl last night, that in Phoenix, most short-term rental sites are barely breaking 50% occupancy. So we probably will get overbuilt on this, and then we will have houses that have been reconstructed to be a short-term rental and not a family home. Thank you for your attention.
Can I give you these to pass?
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Are there any questions for staff? We got the app. Okay, Mr. Hallman?
Do we have any complaints at all from police department, code enforcement, or anything on this property?
Staff does not have any knowledge of any complaints from any of those agencies.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request, please.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve in a second by Mr. Hallman, and a second by Mr. Erdman to approve with the conditions as in the staff report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is request, consider request of Vicky Nivens for a specific use permit to allow a short-term STR residential unhosted in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 438 East Bridge Street. Kira?
Thank you. Again, this slide shows the context of the property. It's outlined in blue on the slide. It's right there on Bridge Street. To the south is retail store and antique store. Along Bridge Street, again, there are multiple numbers of short-term rentals as well as single-family residential properties. This site also had a 2019 SUP with one-year timeframe for two bedrooms. The applicant seeks to formally establish that. It's been operational. No concerns have come our way. We haven't heard of any concerns. This is the zoning map showing the residential there, for residential zoning in yellow. To the south is commercial zoning, and this is your location map showing in pink nearby short-term rentals. And we covered the surrounding context. This is the site plan for the property. It has adequate parking for the proposed use, and you'll see in red, that's an indication of screening for the headlight sweep. Those are small shrubs that would, of course, provide the screening for the headlight height. This is the floor plan demonstrating the number of bedrooms on the, in the building. And the evacuation plan, I think we remember from last time, that's a permitting concern, not a concern of the SUP for the evacuation plan. This is a view of the property from Bridge Street there at the corner. The application. Again, on February 3rd of '23, we mailed out 23 public notices to property owners, and we also published notice in the Hood County News, and we've received no input on this particular project. Staff is recommending approval with the standard conditions, a term of one year, the site plan and floor plan, no more than two bedrooms, and the remaining three that are standard to all of our recommendations. And these are your voting options. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing. Applicants' representative, same deal, just if we have questions for you. Any questions for the applicant's representative? Any questions for Kira? I'd like to make a comment on these, and on all three of these. They are extremely delinquent, and I would like to see something put in place in the city that, I mean, I don't think this encourages, this is 2019, they should have been renewed, and if I understand, in 2021 and '22. So I would like to, on mine, or record my observations, that we need to put something in place to have these timely renewed. I mean, I think this is a little bit too delinquent. I'm not saying specifically on this one, we've come across it on the other, and I know you guys have lots of work and you can't go hunt them down, but there needs to be a burden placed upon these applicants to renew these on time. That's just my personal opinion, and I just want that recorded in the minutes, please. If no other questions, I'll close the public hearing and entertain.
I have a question.
Go ahead. I'll open it back up.
Is there, is there no one at the city governing, or is this just simply you're, they're waiting on the applicant to come in? Do they get an invoice sent yearly on these, or?
So annually, there is a permit required now. Since the July 5th of last year, we now have an annual permit required. They'll need to renew their permit. With that permit, there's a status check, you know, on their SUP to assure that they're still active. If not, then they would need to come in for a permit. But on a regular basis, we don't have a systematic notification that's sent out to any of our SUP holders that are on a term limit.
I had asked, Kira, if there's something in the ordinance, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says if you file it late, then you catch up on your fees. So to me, it's, it's an incentive for the applicants not to do it on time, and the city to actually lose revenue if that's, if, you know, if the fees are there, they're, we've lost revenue. If we don't care about the revenue, then we need to take the fees off and say you can just renew whenever you want, because that's kind of what's happening. It's not necessarily, I don't mean it for community development. I mean, we've got some tweaking that needs to go in the ordinance if we're going to have any teeth behind our permitting fees. Personal opinion. If nothing else, I'll close. If no other comments or questions, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the request, please.
I'll recommend approval as presented on D3?
D2, I think we're on.
Oh, I'm sorry. D2.
Okay. So a motion to approve as presented by staff by Mr. Hallman in a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Class. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D3, consider request of Vicky Nivens for a special use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhosted in a residential 8.400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 606 East Bridge Street. Kira?
Thank you. Again, your contact slide here, the site is outlined in teal, located there on Bridge Street. This, as mentioned earlier, this is a site that was granted a short-term rental in 2019 with a one-year term. It is also in the historic preservation overlay district. The applicant requests to formally establish the SUP for a three-bedroom, short-term rental unhosted. This shows the zoning map. The site is zoned residential there in that dark yellow color. To the south is commercial, zoned and commercially used. To the north is pink or purple that shows a PD, that's a single-family residential district under that PD. And on the context map, looks like I put in the wrong one, I apologize for that. But it would show those other bed and breakfasts that you saw on the other slides. Excuse me there. Okay, and this is your site plan that shows the existing building on the right side of the property, Bridge Street being on the lower portion there, and demonstrating that it has adequate parking for those three bedrooms. This is the floor plan. This is a two-story building that has bedrooms on the first floor and on the second floor. Okay. Application. Again, we sent notice to 20 public notices on property owners on February 2nd, and also published in the Hood County News. I have there, one letter was received in favor. However, I don't have that letter on hand, so I don't think we received anything on this. I apologize for that mistypo. And nothing in opposition and nothing in favor. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions: a one-year term, subject to the site plan and the floor plan, short-term rental, not more than three bedrooms, and then our three standard conditions there at the end. And these are your voting options. I apologize for those mix-ups on the slides. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing. Any questions for applicant's representative? Any questions for staff?
Nothing from the police department, code enforcement on this one either?
No, sir.
Mr. Gaffin, did you, were you speaking, or only if there's questions?
I think I just wanted to follow up.
Okay.
Brian Gaffin, 4103 Crescent Drive. Chairman and commission, representing Vicky Nivens here tonight. The renewal of this, the short-term rentals has been heard loud and clear, and Vicky sends her apologies for not being more attentive to that. We can't agree with you anymore in that it was not an effort to rebuke anything. It was not an effort to try to save Vicky Nivens any money or to short the city on anything, and if there's anything that we need to reimburse in arrears, we'll be glad to do that. We certainly understand that scenario, and she's heard loud and clear that she will be here annually in order to resubmit her application. One thing that Peter said a minute ago is that this applicant has torn down three houses. Of those three houses, there's only really two. I'm not sure where the third one came about. The first one was the code enforcement office of the city of Granbury had determined that it was dilapidated and unsafe, that it was needing to be removed on one site. The other one was actually approved by the Granbury Historic Commission for removal and demolition, and it was because it was so poorly built that a reconstruction of it would have totally demolished the residence because of the way that it was constructed, and we have photographs, and Historic Commission does as well. So just a little bit of clarification there, but we can't agree with you anymore, and if Vicky needs to reimburse, the city would be more than happy to.
Thank you. I was not specifically speaking, and if I did, it didn't mean to be just for hers. We've had multiple ones come across like this over the years that have just, so it just kind of brought it to light to me that we don't have anything that deals kind of with it, but maybe the new permitting process is going to fix itself.
I somewhat have a, can't fault the SUP owners, you know, as someone who gets a notice from the BRA yearly to pay a fee for my water usage and my dock, I would, you know, if they didn't send me that, I would probably not step forth and send them money too, so.
So that's kind of like, it's kind of catch 22. So maybe the new permitting process is going to take care of it. If we don't, then I think we just kind of need to address it a little bit. Anyway, okay, so. Any questions for staff or applicant? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number D3.
Try move for approval as presented.
I have a motion to approve as presented by Mr. Hayes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D4, public hearing, consider request of Julen, I guess it's Julen Properties, to amend the future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan on Block 80 of the Barton Edition from low-density residential LDR to retail office retail, RUT. The property is addressed as 616 Thorpe Springs Road. Kira?
Thank you. So we'll start with your location map. The site is outlined there on Thorpe Springs Road in blue, and it is a platted lot. The zoning existing is R 8.4, single-family, and as we know, the zoning follows the general plan, future land use map. The purpose of the request is for a future land use map amendment from low-density residential to retail office. Should have had office on there. And this shows the comprehensive plan. We'll dwell on this a little bit. The various colors on this map represent various land uses, and as we know, the comprehensive plan serves a guide to future decision-making, particularly when it comes to zoning cases. So this is the vision of the city for this area, that those properties on Cogdale and along the other street there remain as residential, in the low-density residential, that's the large lot size that you see on your map there. And then those other colors, let's look at what they mean. The red is for your heavier commercial, and that's farther off to the east on the map. The blue is a public use, and the city there, and then the green is for parks. So what you're seeing is a variety of uses. However, this site and the major streets there on Thorpe Spring Road and Cogdale and the other neighborhood areas are very clearly designated for single-family purposes. The general plan as a guide seeks to encourage residential uses next to residential uses. As we've just seen in the past couple of cases on our agenda tonight, we know that through a specific use permit, bed and breakfast uses can be in residential areas, as can, and we didn't address this on any of our cases tonight, but by the administration of the code, certain other uses, like home occupations, where you live there and you operate a home occupation out of your house, are also allowed in a neighborhood. So this change would introduce commercial, office, retail to this area of which we see none. There's none in the vicinity of these streets. These streets have a vision for this vision document to remain as residential into the future, so just wanted to give that some thought. And this is in your staff report explaining what the low-density residential means. It really means a lot of a moderate size upon which a single-family dwelling would be placed, and the expectation is that with a single-family and the low-density residential, you would have some degree of open space, you know, on your yards, and you would have the ability to have that single-family dwelling experience. And the contrast to the office retail, just give me a second here, contrast to the office retail, and I'm just going to refer to the staff report there, retail land use typically includes establishments which provide merchandise for retail sales, like shopping centers, like restaurants and grocery stores and things like this. And so that's the retail office designation. It also would accommodate for office. However, the property would need to be zoned properly to accommodate these kinds of offices. This is the first step of a series that would be converting a residential property in a residentially planned area to a non-residential use. Again, this area is noted for low-density residential. Adjacent land use recommendations are low-density residential, and they're the public nearby, and the area is not situated on a major roadway or intersection where you would normally find commercial uses, and so it does not serve as a commercial node. And the proposed retail office designation is not compatible with the existing future land use plan designations on surrounding properties. And these are some photos that demonstrate the character of the neighborhood. There in the bottom right is the existing site. On the top right is the Cogdale street scene. It's kind of hard to show these places, but along Cogdale on both sides are single-family dwellings, and then across the street is the site to the west, which is a vacant property, not improved at this time. And this just shows our notification was sent on February 2nd to 16 property owners, and we also advertised in the Hood County News. We did not receive any input either in favor nor in opposition to the request. Because this area is demonstrated as being residential in nature and lacking of commercial characteristics, staff is recommending denial of this request. There is a companion request for a zoning change. That's the next item on the agenda. Staff recommends denial of this request as presented, however, and this area is recommended as stated for low-density residential. The recommendations nearby are the residential and public closest to this property. The area requested for retail The area requested for retail is situated, is not situated along major corridor, and the designation is not therefore compatible with the future land use plan designation of the surrounding properties. Your voting options for the future land use plan are to approve and amend this request to the future land use plan, or to deny the request to amend the future land use plan. And I would note that any change to the future land use plan does not obligate recommendation for approval to change the zoning of the property. If the commission were to recommend denial of the amendment, the companion zoning request would need to be denied because it would not meet the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan. So those are your voting options, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Kira, I went to go ahead, and is it okay if we go ahead and open D5 in conjunction with this? Or would you rather, go ahead and talk, so we can talk through both of them?
If you would prefer that, you can. We geared this up for a separate conversation, however.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open them, so we can, we know we have to vote on them separately, if that's okay. I meant to do that, anyway. So I'm going to go ahead and open up also D5 with D4. Consider Request of Julen Properties to rezone Block 80 of the Barton Edition from Residential 8400 (R8.40) to Light Commercial LC. The property is addressed at 616 Thorpe Springs Road. Kira?
Yes. So I'll spare you the context conversation, but note that the existing use on this property is a residential building, a dwelling unit. And the purpose of the request for the change in zoning is to allow the existing seven-bedroom, bed and breakfast hosted, to operate it as a seven-bedroom unhosted. So the, that's the key purpose for this change. This is the comprehensive plan map as existing today. We won't go back over the comprehensive plan land use request. And this is the zoning map, showing the zoning in the area. There is HC zoning to the south and to the west. Now, the overlay on this area is for historic preservation. As you know, historic preservation ordinance applies. And with the historic preservation ordinance, there are certain uses in the HC district that are precluded from being activated in that overlay. And I just wanted to advise you of that in case that wasn't apparent. So I want to go back to the vision. The vision of the comprehensive plan map, or the future land use plan map, is that those use, that zoning would revert to something of a public nature, for the blue area, and something of a residential nature, in this case, low-density residential. So that's the future, is that that commercial zoning would change back, and that's the goal of the land use plan. And the other colors represent lower-density residential compared to the subject site. So that's the comprehensive plan policy. And again, photos of the area. And the notices, the same, except for this was for the zoning change, and we did not receive any input. And staff is recommending denial of the zoning request. The proposal constitutes spot zoning, which is a precluded practice by state law. You can't have a location of zoning where light zoning is not located. And generally defined as zoning a property incompatible with the surrounding area's zoning and comprehensive plan. So when we look at the zoning, that maybe may seem to be out of character, and when the conjunction is and comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plan is just reviewed as not inclusive of commercial uses. The requested zoning, it does not appear to be harmonious and adapted to building structures and uses of the abutting property and other property in the vicinity of the premises under consideration. To that note, there are uses in this zoning district that's proposed, that while the district seems amenable and appropriate nearby to residential, some of the uses that are allowed by right are not amenable or really appropriate in this area. One would be auto repair. Another would be a restaurant, in which both of those have substantial parking needs and create a different character. Now, as you know, the property is designated historic landmark, which is suitable to continue with the site's residential zone, rather than change to a commercial district, which could disrupt the continuation of such a cultural place. And then we covered the companion case. These are your voting options for the zoning application, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kira. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to come to the podium, please, sir? Thank you.
My name's Lenny Shores, owner of the Iron Horse Bed and Breakfast. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. There's a couple reasons why. When you, when you lay it out as a retail store, we're not trying to put a local convenience store. We're not trying to take it out of the context. It is a historic home. It was the first bed and breakfast in Granbury. It's a historic landmark, I understand that. If you're not aware, we do currently have the Iron Horse Inn on the market to be sold. And the reason we are requesting a change is the restrictions of being strictly residential for what prospective buyers, and right now, everybody's walked away. Nope, nobody will touch it. And reason being is, there's been some ideas that people have wanted to do. Some of it is, is continuous bed and breakfast. No one has really come out with anything different than what we're currently doing, although to, for growth of the business, because most during the week is, you don't have much business there. They want to do some things, such as some dinner experiences. There was, we did have one client that talked about maybe putting a spa in one area of it. It's not talking about transforming this to something that's an auto shop or anything else. We're trying to preserve the Iron Horse Inn and move it forward. And with the current restrictions of requiring hosted, that's the other thing, is most people nowadays, they don't want to run a traditional bed and breakfast. They do not want to be hosted. Everybody else in the city that's the same size as me is unhosted. You've got Hotel Lucy, you've got, used to be Pomegranate House, the cottages. Those are both light commercial. They run as unhosted. You have Inon Granbury Lake, which is larger, it's actually PD, but it's larger. I think even the Blue Heron, which is right in the middle of residential homes, three rooms, I believe their owners told us they're commercial as well right now. So I don't believe we're asking for, we're not trying to put in auto shops, paint body. I'm not trying to put in a convenience store. We're trying to preserve the Iron Horse Inn. Due to some family things, I need to move to Oklahoma and help out with family. And it's trying to find a buyer right now as a traditional hosted bed and breakfast, where you require someone to live in that residence. People, they don't want to do it anymore. That's, that's just not what they want to do. We've loved it. We've had it for four years, come August. We love Granbury. But trying to move forward and preserve the Iron Horse Inn, it's, I don't know how we're going to do that, to be perfectly honest with you. It is a corporation. If I can't, if I can't figure out something to do with the property, you know, when it was first sold back in 2012, previous owners, the place was pretty much rundown. It was brought back to life. Everybody, prospective buyer that did come in, or they're wanting to keep it alive and keep it running. It's just the restrictive nature of how we are. And I did see the future, the future land use. And currently, yes, right next door to us is heavy commercial. Used to be the police training department. It is, to be honest, the biggest eyesore. When you look out of one of my suites at the end, police department still comes out there. They train, not complaining about them. It's nice to have them around. But there's a lot going on right there in that lot, or at least used to, but you still have the city coming in. The vacant lot across the street, it's currently heavy commercial. I saw a future land use was light-density residential. That property butts right next to the railroad track. Even where I'm at, across, across from the police training center, it sounds like the training's coming right through the center of the Iron Horse Inn. So to me, that being, I don't know how you would make that light residential right across the street, but I'm honestly not trying to do, I'm just trying to figure out how to make the Iron Horse Inn survive. And I don't know how else I'm going to do it and keep it as a historic landmark without being able to change it to where I can get a good buyer in here that's going to take care of it and preserve that house for what it is and move it in. One of the buyers, we're even talking about changing the name back to Cogdale, making it like the Cogdale House or something like that, to bring the history of the house back out. So we've had some prospective buyers, but everybody's walked away. Nobody is, nobody's, they have different ideas of what to do. We've increased as far as traffic and, you know, we've increased business since we've owned it probably 40% since we picked it up four years ago, just with the way we run it. More occupancy during the week, but we don't have any trouble out of anybody. It hasn't increased traffic around. It's kind of limited on the amount of parking you have there, so it's not like you could put in a huge restaurant where it's going to, you're going to overflow the neighborhood. There have been people wanting to do, there's been a couple chefs that they wanted to still have the bed and breakfast, but then offer some dinner experiences to guests. Current residences, I can't do that. I cannot cook food for anybody that is not staying overnight at the Iron Horse Inn. So everything that people have had ideas of what to do to make things a little bit better for their visions, it's, nothing is outrageous, but it does not fit within the residential, the R8.4. So that's just, that's just my thoughts, what we're trying to do. We're just, we're just trying to keep the Iron Horse alive and get a potential buyer in here that will take care of it and carry it on for years to come. That property, and to be hon, I pay commercial rates on all my utilities. Be honest with you, when it was sold to me, it was sold as a commercial lot, and even the realtor that sold it the last four times said he sold it as a commercial lot the last four or five times. I didn't even know it was residential until two, three months ago. But anyway, we're just trying to, we're just trying to make it work. We feel like we're at a little bit of a disadvantage with other properties our size that have seven rooms, and make it something that a good investor will come in and take care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Erdman?
You sound really passionate about keeping this, the name and everything. I have a question. If you do sell it to somebody, you're going to have it in the deed where it must stay a bed and breakfast, or in a year from now, they're going to tear it down and put in that auto body shop?
So I am passionate about it. I love the Iron Horse Inn. I love the house. I love the history. I love Granbury. As far as putting it, I hadn't thought about doing that. But I would think, because it is historic district, my understanding is, before anything could really be done to that property, such as tear it down for a auto shop, I think that would still fall underneath the historic, the Historic Committee of Granbury, correct? I think that would have to get approved. I mean, I'm limited even on what I can do on the outside of the house without getting approval from the Historic Committee.
Kira, that is a Granbury landmark or a Texas landmarked house?
It is a Granbury historic landmark.
Okay, okay. Which, well, we've seen a couple of them, we stuck. The hospital and the theater got removed, I believe. Questions?
I just wanted to state that it kind of, the quandary that I feel here, I understand how this broadens your buyer base, but I think the fear of the unknown is what scares me here, is that by granting that, you open the, kind of an unknown factor of what can move in there. Other than what's limited by parking, that's my quandary, is that there's this unknown, once you grant this retail office, what can go in there. I know you don't want that, but if someone buys it, they can pretty much do what they want, other than limited by parking at that point. So that, just wanted to state that. That's the quandary that I'm in right now.
Mr. Claus?
Yeah, Kira, I just have a question. If this was, for instance, a two-bedroom hosted or unhosted, we wouldn't be having this discussion, right? Is it merely because of the size and the seven bedrooms?
Right. It's due to the seven bedrooms for the end, because of the desire not to have the hosted element.
Okay, thank you.
Kira, a question. Could it be unhoseded, or is it because it's seven bedrooms, it has to be hosted?
So in the seven bedrooms context, and in a residential zoning district, it has to be hosted to have the seven.
That's where I've tried looking at this every which way, but everywhere I turn, I've got, and if you remember, I even asked, I, when we did our SUPs for this a couple of years ago, I was trying to get, I have an eighth room that's there as well. But the seven rooms are required to be hosted, even though, you know, you've got, like I said, other places that I'm the same size of, or they're even bigger, they have no requirement to have anybody on the property whatsoever. And so, and that is, that is driving buyers off. I requested before about what adjustments could be made there, but, so yes, that is, that is one thing. It's just...
Not correct. When he was referencing Hotel Lucy and Pomegranate, they're along Pearl Street, are those not zoned like commercial? That's why the difference, correct? Which is what he's asking to go to like commercial. But there's also two things being talked about. Some of it is rooms, and some of it is other uses, like using it more like a restaurant or a paid place to go and have, you know, a dinner. And so I hear two different kind of things going on. It's not just the number of rooms.
Right. There's a few different things going on. This gets a little complex. To answer your question, the Hotel Lucy along Pearl, that is zoned commercial, like commercial, and it is about the bedrooms and whether it's hosted or unhosted.
I had specifically asked here earlier today about the Inon Lake Granbury, and Mr. Shores mentioned, too, that it's a PD. And I believe you told me, and that's like sits on about three acres. So PDs, we don't have enough, because I was trying to explore some options for you, and we don't have enough acreage at your place to do a PD, which is how Inon Lake Granbury is, because they have over three acres, and they, they are still in a residential zoning also. But they went under a PD with more acreage, and they have like 29 parking spots, too. So we're talking a lot, a lot more parking. But trying to find some options, just trying to, because I, you know... But trying to find some options, just trying to, because I, you know... Any other comments or questions?
How many parking spaces are affiliated with this property?
I believe there are nine or 10 on the site.
10 or 11.
Is it 10 or...
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe I, I believe I have a total of 11.
Are you counting the house that faces Cogdale behind there in your car?
No.
Okay.
I would have, there is, I believe, eight spaces straight, and then there's enough for end-to-end tandem. That's what I was thinking, in one spot. So it's either 10 or 11. I can't remember now off the top of my head.
You do own the house behind it, right? 235 Cogdale?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that where you, as the host, stay, or is that where you rent out?
No, we do not rent that out. We stay, when we have guests, we stay in the inn.
Okay.
As required to be hosted. But I do have an 18-year-old and dog, so we use that house as well.
Okay.
Have you had anyone express interest in buying it and using it as unhosted, but they can't because of the zoning? Have you had any buyers at all express that?
There is. So I did have, the hosted/unhosted seems to be the biggest issue, because people do not want to, they don't want to live inside the inn. They don't want to live in a, basically, you'd be living in a hotel room. So I have had some. I've had some that wanted to keep it as an inn, but they just wanted to do some, a dinner party every once in a while for maybe outside, outside people, like I said, dinner experiences, which would be just people coming in, having dinner, and leaving, not a full-time restaurant. But they can't do that. And then I had one get, I had one prospective buyer, she wanted to keep it as a, as a bed and breakfast, but she wanted to have somebody else here manage it for her. And, but then she was also wanting to do a lot of, she does a lot of canning, and she was wanting to sell like the canned goods. And she was, can call the city, see if she would have to have a commercial kitchen inspection. I don't know, I don't know what came of that. But even, but just trying to do anything for anyone outside of the inn itself, kind of has, and even, we, I do salsa. I have homemade salsa. I create every weekend for my guests. Everybody's asked me to can it and sell it, but even if I wanted to try to make it a little bit of a business out of that, of just a small, I can't, I can't even do that. I can't even do salsa and sell it, because people aren't staying there at the inn to do it too, which to me is not that big of a deal. But I've had a couple, but the, being, being required to be hosted is the biggest factor by far. Yeah.
So just brainstorming, I'm probably going beyond that, so you're probably have to help me, Kira, but you also own 235 Cogdale. If those properties were replanted as one, can that not be the place that the host stays? Or would you have people that would be interested in living in the house on Cogdale that's literally in the backyard? I mean, is that an option? I mean, it's not tonight, obviously, but I mean, trying to find a solution for you. Would you even have people that would be interested in living in 235 Cogdale and not actually living in the main house with the guest? Because that is, you do own both properties, and they are contiguous.
Right. And they've, and right now, the way I have it listed, because of the way things go, I have to sell the inn and not the house, or both of them together. I'd much rather sell both of them together, but there hasn't been, a lot of people have talked more about using 235 as an STR. A couple people have talked about, yes, trying to get someone to manage it and have them live there. So, but not that, not that much conversation on it. I think we'd, I think it would depend on the buyer. I know a couple of the potential buyers have talked to someone specifically here that manages several STRs about managing, managing it if they purchased it, but we're just not, haven't had any luck yet.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions for staff? Anything else you need, sir? You're good? Okay, if not, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will go back and entertain the motion, first of all, on the request to amend the future land use map contained within the 2016 comp plan.
Chair, I move to deny the request.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes. A motion to deny the request that's presented, a second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four ayes, I mean, four ayes and one nay. So let's see, Kira, we still need to, based on that, your instructions, or we still need to move on the rezoning?
Because it's an active case, you would still take the motion on the zoning. Note, the future land use plan is the same as it is today.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda to entertain is the D5, the motion to rezone. And I need to have, to see what, a motion on that, please.
Chair, I move to deny the rezoning request.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes to deny the rezoning request. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Class. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with four ayes and one nay. And if there's no other business tonight, which there's none on my third page, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.